To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, can we have the roll call?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
All more present, this is a special meeting, the purpose of which is to approve the minutes from the December 12th regular meeting, review and approve the December financial reports, and approve payment of December bills, review and approve amended 2022 appropriations, review and approve end of the year payments, review and potentially approve 2023 revenue and appropriation budgets, approve the 2023 Ohio Public Employees Retirement System Conversion Plan, approve a deed transfer of property located at parcel D14-00813-0070, and finally, to approve a resolution to self-certify a $50,000 micro purchase threshold for American Rescue Plan Act Fund spending.
Do we have any visitor comments? So move on to the fiscal officer's report, which is going to be the majority of our meeting, correct, Mark?
I believe it's the entirety.
That's why I'm on.
We'd like to hear.
Okay, well, let's get started, and hopefully we'll get done. First of all, you have the minutes from the December 12th meeting. Are there any corrections? And I have a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 1212 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks for doing those, those were a lot of minutes.
Listening to almost two hour meeting a second time is really enjoyable.
Right past your surprise.
You're a hit of sarcasm in your voice.
Not a bit.
Okay. I've given you the December financial reports. They are all current as of the 28th of December, but I've actually not done anything since then. So you have, at this point, what is going to be the year-end fund status, the year-to-date cash summary by fund, which is 12 months, the month of December cash summary by fund, the December receipts, and the December payments. The only thing that has not yet been posted will be the interest revenue, which we will receive after tomorrow night. So otherwise, I am done for the year. I do want to point out that warrant number 50624 to the Germantown First Church of God is the $2,000 donation to the Sunshine Bag Food Ministry that you approved on December 12th. Are there any questions or comments on the financials? Now can I have a motion to approve them and approve the payments of the December bills?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the December financial reports and authorize the payments. Payment of December bills warrants 50622 through 50628, and vouchers 986 through 1068 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, I have given you the final appropriation budget for 2022. This represents a bunch of changes that I made throughout the year to the various appropriations as was needed in order to make payments. So at the end of the year, every year, we reauthorize all the appropriations. So when the auditors come in, they see that you've approved every payment and authorized the appropriation. I've also given you the resolution that you will use to approve those amended appropriations. And we'll make that resolution 2022-47.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2022-47, Resolution Amending the 2022 Appropriations as Attached to be Forwarded to the Montgomery County Auditor.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2022-47 is adopted. I do not have any unpaid bills, as I mentioned earlier, so the next item on the agenda is not applicable. Okay, now to the meat of the meeting, and that is a review of the 2023 draft budgets. And I have given you, under a paper clip, everything we're going to be discussing, and we'll work through it in the order that I've given it to you. First of all, I want to remind you, the majority of our revenue, as you all know, comes from the taxes, real estate taxes, personal property taxes. So I've given you Schedule A, as well as Schedule B, from the county auditor, that shows you each of the funds that we are going to be receiving tax revenue in 2023. That is the amount we're allowed to budget. It's actually not 100%. It's really done at 95%. So there's always extra tax revenue that comes in. And you can see that some of this is inside millage, and some of this is millage that has been voted on by the township residents. And then the third page of that is the, all the various county government units, the local government fund distribution. And you'll see that they are telling us we'll get $27,477. You will see each of those numbers as we work our way through the budget review. The first department that I would recommend that you review is the police department. And I've given you two documents for the police department. The first one is a spreadsheet that I prepared using the numbers provided to me by Mrs. Close and the chief, comparing the 2023 budget numbers to the final budget in 2022, the total year expenses in 2022, and the total year expenses in 2021. So you can get some kind of comparison. The second spreadsheet that looks like this is what Mrs. Close actually prepared and sent to me after she and the chief agreed on those numbers. And with that, I will turn it over to the police department for any discussion. Are there any questions?
Just in looking ours over, I think we were pleasantly surprised that we actually had more money at the end of the year than we thought we were going to have. So that is a plus, as far as we were concerned. Of course, we went up in medical and dental and vision because of adding two employees, one being Josh Nichols and the other being Ms. Close. Other than that, I don't know of anything that's really out of the ordinary with the budget that we're submitting this year as opposed to any other, unless you have something.
I was gonna say, I might point out.
Okay, go ahead.
Two items on the receipt. One is the $33,000 that'll come from Valleyview Local School District or the SRO. And the second one is the very last item on the receipt section, and that is the transfer in from the general fund to represent the salary and opers, Medicare, Social Security of the elected official charges that will be allocated to the police department. And you recall at the December meeting, you decided that that's the process we would do. We would reinstate the trustee salaries at 100% from 75% to continue the allocation, and then we would budget a transfer from the general fund to each of the departments that get the salary and benefit allocations of the elected officials. So that $15,500 represents the cost that they would incur for the elected official salaries and benefits next year. That's the primary fund. The other five police funds are all small, very little activity. Really, the only one that really gets any activity is the special projects, which is our K9 fund.
I guess the only concern I have, the bottom of this first page, as far as fund balance at the end of the year projected, is going to be 64,884, is that correct?
That is what is left that I did not budget. I've had other things we won't ever use at all, but I've had it because I was taught by Lori that if you don't budget the money, you can't possibly use the money. I budget as much, but that's what is left that I did not budget. So we'll have at least that much carryover. Kind of like last year, you'll see it was 82, but we really ended up with, I think Mark's got on here, 254.
So the budget at the end of the year, the fund balance at the end of 2023 should be healthy, is that what?
It'll be better than 65. It will not be where we are this year, 254, simply because we have more salaries. We have the increase of 3%. More benefit cost. But we know that the revenue will be higher, because again, the taxes are only allowed to be budgeted 95%. And so they will do better, but the fund balance will definitely drop from where it is at the end of 2022. And as I think I mentioned last month, at some point, we're going to have to talk about what we're going to do in terms of being able to, could you, our current spending without a new police levy?
Are there any, do you anticipate any areas you could possibly cut if the balances do get too low or the fund balance get too?
I mean, improvement of sites, I pad that a little bit just because we've talked about, I think Lori and you guys, didn't you guys usually get the carpet cleaned in the road room yearly, for every couple of years?
I'd say every two, three years.
And it hasn't been cleaned since I've been here. And it's, so like, I had a little money there. It doesn't have to be done. That's not a big deal. Other expenses, I always put stuff there just for anything that might possibly come up. Because like I said, I was taught that if you don't budget money, then you can't use it. So if, God forbid, something comes up, something goes down, we've got extra funds just in case. But I mean, I do not anticipate using $20,000 for much of anything.
That's what I thought that, do you know any idea how much extra you budgeted?
Like I said, I always pad a few things just to be on the safe side.
20,000?
Yeah, I mean, that's probably at least, at least 2025. But I try to anticipate, you know, like, I think I budget a little high for gas, just because you just don't know. I budget a little bit higher for, I think, natural gas, too. Try to be on the safe side.
By the end of the year, we could be down 150,000 from what we are this year.
But you can ask chief, I'm also pretty tight, too. They'll come to me and want things, and I'll tell them, no, not in the budget.
I guess that's my biggest concern, as far as if we have to try to run a police levy. But as I said before, after the school levy, it's going to be difficult to pass any levy.
Right, I wonder when, 27, 2015, that's the last?
That's when you get your replacement.
Right.
Of the continuous.
2016, you did a five and a half mil. And then prior to that, you had one in, two of them in 2002.
Yeah, but those were small.
Yes, two mils each.
And then in 2015, we'd milked from like 99 or 98, lower than 15.
Yeah.
The previous time, we did that, redid that one, our levy particularly.
But also, if you look at salaries, too, if you look at like, what we budgeted and what we actually used, there's an extra 4,000 in mine salary, just in case. I know reserve, we budgeted 29,000 for reserve last year. We only use, we use less than seven, or, you know, part-time. And right now, we don't even have a part-time person, so.
You still have 29 for this year?
Yeah. I mean, I don't anticipate, I mean, even our overtime budget, I think, I budgeted 15 last year, we only used 7,400. Like I said, I always pad it just to be on the safe side, you know, God forbid, one of our guys goes down, something, you know, is sick, and we have to have that money reserved for something. So I always anticipate having quite a bit of that stuff left over.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's even 40,000, that would bring the 64 up to about 100. And that's still 150 less than it was.
That's possible.
Yeah.
But this year, we were 40 more than last year. So I'm hoping, trying.
I understand. Risk.
I know.
Been ahead of years.
Yeah.
So we can do a couple of things. I mean, if you want to make any changes to what any of the departments have suggested, we should do it tonight, so that when we come in on our meeting on Monday, we'll have the final numbers. So if you want to make changes, let's talk about them. Or if you're comfortable with the numbers, then that'll be what I'll present Monday for your approval.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, too. I just see, like you said, we got, this is on the horizon that we got to meet.
Yeah, I don't think we should micromanage or.
Nope.
By any means, no.
They see what we're saying.
Okay, well, that can take care of the police department. Let's move on to the road department. And I've given you the same two schedules. The first one is the spreadsheet I prepared. The second one is the input that Jeremy gave me that went into the spreadsheet. Is there any questions?
There really isn't.
The only thing I'd like to point out is, I did put a couple line items for equipment replacement under 2031 Road and Bridge, there was $54,795 there, and over in...
You've got it in the first one, too.
Oh, yeah, the 22,980. Basically, that's money I'm sitting back for the replacement of the second dump truck next year. In 2023, or no, I'm sorry, in 2024, I didn't want replacing 108, which is the 2006 international dump truck. It was placed mine four years ago, and the other one is overdue. So just trying to put some money back to offset that cost is probably going to be 150,000-ish equipped. So I think I set back 77,000, 77,7, 75, exact, in the budget for just holding that money back till 2024. Won't have to come up with the whole amount, basically. So other than that, just a couple of changes that I made, I actually reduced the amount of money I had in the Highway Salt and Brine under permissible vehicle with Mark's spreadsheets that he gave out. You know, it's real easy to go back and look what our spending was over the last three years. And I come to the conclusion, we hadn't been spending anywhere near the amount that budgeted. So I think I knocked about 10,000 off that, in other places, budget. Probably some of that went into that equipment replacement fund, and probably some of it went into the contracted roof repair. So hopefully this year, and like Shawna says, you always budget the whole amount, but you know better than to spend it. But if you don't budget it, you can't spend it. So in our contracted roof repair and capital improvement funds throughout the budget, we had 310,450 budgeted. Now, by no means are we going to contract 310,450, because some of that's going to have to be for carryover next year, you know, pay your salaries a year. So all that stuff. So there was a few other small changes. I think electricity, there was a couple of the utilities that I think I bumped up that were a little low. But other than that, least payroll, you know, 3% that we had talked about last year or at the last meeting, excuse me. And I think the rest of it is pretty much the same as last year, other than the monetary amounts, but the layout and what we're spending the money on is pretty much the same, overhead and then roadwork.
That's about it.
That's all you could do.
For the road department, we have two transfers in from the general fund. The first one is $4,000, and that is actually in Fund 2031 Road and Bridge, and that's representing the cost of mowing the rural cemeteries. And you've done that the last two years, actually three years, if you count the catch-up we did back in 2021. The second transfer in is in 2021, because that's where the trustee and fiscal officer salaries go. And the road department allocation of those expenses from the elected officials is about 14,900. So that's the amount that I budgeted as a receipt for that purpose. I'm good.
You have no issues with it?
Nope. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Right.
Let's go on to first the general fund, and then we'll look at the trash after that. So the general fund, I'm budgeting receipts of 152,000. This year, we were at 162,000. And if you look at the local government distribution, we actually got 34,000 in this year. And, but I'm only allowed to budget 27,000 for next year. So I think that's one of those areas where we will actually do better in terms of the revenue than the budget. But the big number in the revenue receipt area is the interest number. I budgeted $36,000 for interest. And I have done that, we got 22,000 for this year, but as you recall, we did not move the money to Star Ohio until mid-year. But November, the general fund got almost $6,000 of interest from Star Ohio. So actually, if we continue at that rate, 36,000 is much less than it will actually turn out to be. Thank goodness for Star Ohio. It's the only good thing about inflation right now. There's a lot of bad things, but that is one good. The expenses in the general fund, I'm budgeting 123,000 for basically the administrative side. We were at 78,000 this year, 84,000 last year. But the, we've got the salaries going up for the trustees, plus all of our salaries going up one and a half percent, because the state has done that every year for the last several years. Plus then, we've got those four allocations, which we've already discussed, two to the road, one to the police, and another one that we'll discuss in a minute, to the trash fund, going into that administrative area. So that's really the reason why that's gone up from 2022. The township expenses up mainly because of electricity and the natural gas cost, because both of those have increased significantly over last year. The zoning is a higher increase, because we now have to budget the opers and the medical and so forth for Mrs. Close, as she will be moving on to our medical plan on January 1st. But with all of those puts and takes, I'm expecting that our ending fund balance at the end of next year will go from 251,000, only down 5,000 to 246,000. Very good. Any changes you'd like to see? Okay. And then turn the page, we'll do the trash. And there, I'm expecting a decrease in fund benefit, 30 to 94,000. That, again, is because we have to add in opers and medical and so forth and so on, even though we're going to transfer $4,500 in from the general fund to cover the elected official salaries and benefits. So in three years, the trash fund ending balance has gone from 156 to 130, and possibly to 94 next year. So we will need to be talking in a year or so about an increase, because a year from now, we will be, if I remember correctly, Mr. Stubbs, we're going to be renegotiating a new contract with a provider, we're starting in 2024.
Correct.
So there.
It's likely to be an increase, so there'll be a big increase later.
What about the list of people that hadn't paid, or anything coming with that?
Where that hits is in the revenue side, under special assessments. You approve them to be certified to the county auditor, to be put on their taxes, and when they pay those, then we get that money through special assessments. But it comes in drips and drabs.
Okay.
So I don't know how many years that's out, that's spread out in their taxes. I'm not quite sure how. Do you have any sense of that?
I have no idea, no.
I don't either. I only budgeted 12,000, but that is an increase over this year, so.
One of the good things, I mean, we've had several inquiries from Realtors who have called up, are there any liens on the property? So we can tell them, yeah, they owe $200 on that trash bill. It was four, even though we wouldn't find out until they showed up at a meeting, we had to discount that. So hopefully that will continue in the future. Let's know what's going on.
Would you like to make any changes to the trash budget?
No.
You're making my job very easy over the weekend. Okay, the last schedule is our pass-throughs and other funds. This is a pretty cut and dried area. We know how much tax revenue we're allowed to budget. And then I estimate what the tax collection fees are, and then I net those two numbers and then calculate 90%, and that's how much I budget to be paid to Germantown. So you see, you've got the park levy, you've got the pool levy. For the pool, I've also added in the $4,500, assuming that you're going to do the levy in May, and that there'll be nothing else on the ballot, so we'll have to pay the full amount of $900 per precinct. We never quite know what that's going to be, but that's what I put in. And that number comes out of the revenue before I calculate the 90%. Fire levy, there's some miscellaneous other expenses, and that, I think that's our... What's the word I'm looking for? EM, not emergency services, a...
EMS?
Yes. Where the county charges us per certain amount per resident.
Pardon me? Dispatching.
No. It's to provide emergency services to us in the event of an emergency. And then also, we pay the electricity for the sirens throughout the township, and I take that out of the money before I pass it on to Germantown. Next page is the senior citizens levy and the EMS fire levy from 2010. Last two funds, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, there is no more money to come in there, and I have budgeted, assuming you're going to spend the full amount this year. We certainly haven't talked about where that'll be spent, but we'll budget it, and if we have anything left over, we can still spend in 2024. We do not have to finish it in 2023. And then the Sunsbury Cemetery Fund, we never spend any money out of that, because we can only spend the earning, I believe, and it doesn't earn that much to justify even doing anything at the cemetery. And finally, on page three, the Fouts Trust Fund. The good news for them is they're allowed to get interest. So I budgeted $1,200, based on what the last few months have been, and as Mr. And as Mr. Stubbs requested, I have put in four thousand dollars for donations out of the trust, Fouts Trust Fund.
I think we'll have to look at that to end the year because we have to figure out what, at what level do we have to, are we using up all the interest?
Do you remember what the? We have it in the files.
At the five, yeah, so. Because we, we don't want to spend it down so quickly that we
Correct, yeah.
Five years or whatever versus ten. We'll worry about that.
Yep. We can go ahead and approve the, the appropriation. You will not spend the money until you actually pass a resolution, so. If you're comfortable with all this. No changes there. We'll put through a resolution for you to approve on Monday. That takes care of our budget review. Thank you to the police department and the road department for your work. Makes my job easy.
Well, thank you for the, the paperwork that you handed out.
Seriously, makes our job a lot easier.
Makes it a lot.
Isn't it nice that we work as a team?
So nice to be able to look back and compare your spending over the last three years and, or at least two years and it's easy to read format, essentially. Thanks.
I'm glad it's helpful.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, let's go on to our final three topics. Every year, um, in order for our employees to, for their unused vacation and sick time that they cash out to be concert, considered earnable salary by the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, otherwise known as opers. The township needs to have an annual conversion plan on file with opers. We must reauthorize this plan every year. So to establish the twenty twenty three conversion plan, I've given you the resolution title, which we can use, and I've also given you a copy of what the resolution will look like that I will send up to opers and we'll make that twenty twenty two forty eight.
Okay, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty two dash forty eight. A resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to execute an annual conversion plan for twenty twenty three with the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System.
Second. Thank you very much. Any discussion of resolution twenty twenty two forty eight? During now, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross. Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty two forty eight is adopted. We talked about this at length on December twelfth, this next item, and that is the Eckhart Road parcel land. And just to review, back in two thousand and fifteen, the trustees did sell some extra land that was left over when we straightened out Eckhart Road. We sold that land on governmentdeals.com. And Scott Wydell was the buyer on behalf of Wydell Corporation. Uh, the corporation paid the township for that purchase, but we never transferred the deed. And so Mr. Holberg took it upon himself to figure out how to fix this. First contacted the engineer's office at the county. How to resolve the oversight and then went to the prosecutor's office and had an deed and resolution prepared. And you decided to wait until tonight to approve those so that Mr. Potter could be present. So I have given you, I think, both the resolution and the draft. And we'll make that resolution twenty twenty two forty nine. And you may want to read part of it, but I don't think you want to read the legal description. You can just refer to it by parcel number. Can we do it?
If you want.
I don't care. I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty two dash forty nine, a resolution to approve the deed transfer of property located at parcel D one four dash zero zero eight one three dash zero zero seven zero. Anything else I need to say? Per Ohio Revised Code, section five oh three point zero one, the township has the legal authority to sell this property. Second. Any discussion of resolution twenty twenty two forty nine? Oh, just making up for a mistake that was made years ago. I'll go ahead and call the roll then. Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty two forty nine is adopted and I am going to pass around to you the resolution because the prosecutors want all of you to sign it.
And.
And I will also pass around the D. Mr. Holberg, how many copies do you want? Two copies of the D.
Two of the resolution and two of the D.
This needs to be notarized, is that correct?
Yeah, Shaw's noted.
This is always well notarized. There are two copies of the D. Does anyone have one of their copies of the resolution? Signature page that we can use for the second one?
Right there.
What's the meaning? It's the signature page on the resolution.
Here's the. Think I'll make a copy of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the quick claim D.
That you wrote, you wrote another, no. You're way ahead of us.
Mark needs to sign it.
This is your original.
Sorry to keep you waiting. Okay. This one's forty nine also. This will be our second copy of the resolution. You can go to Jeremy.
Okay.
Although I will need a copy of it. I need a copy of all the signatures, but go ahead and give them to him. Will you make a copy for me, Mr. Holberg? Mark.
Those are Jim.
I think only one of those, Mr. Holberg, has the site plan. You may need to copy the site plan a second time.
So that has to be a part of the D.
I think I only put it on one of those two. Okay, our final item of business tonight. Um, and I see I spelled resolution wrong in my report. Uh, back in June, you authorized an increase in the micro purchase threshold from ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. For most American Rescue Plan Act fund purchases, although it's forty five thousand dollars for road maintenance or repair. But that's allowed under the code of federal regulations. However, in order to continue to increase that micro purchase threshold from ten thousand to fifty or forty five for roads. It must be reauthorized each year by a resolution. And I have given you the resolution for you to use this year uh, to approve the micro purchase increase. We'll make that twenty twenty two fifty, our last resolution of this year.
What do you want to do now? You don't have to read all of it. It's up to you.
Well, you probably want to. I think you want to read the resolution part for sure. Starting at the bottom of page two. I would start with be resolved and then go down there for. I think we should do that. Want me to read it? I'll read it. As we'll say. Okay, be it resolved by the township trustees of Germantown. And there is a bunch of whereas's. The first one being that on today's date. I think it's going to be trustee Potter. Move the adoption of a following resolution. And then I'm going to do, therefore be it resolved by the board that one, in accordance with two CFR two hundred dash three two zero A one IV. And the applicable provisions of Ohio law, the township hereby self-certifies that following the micro purchase thresholds, each of which is a higher threshold consistent with state law under two CFR two hundred dot three two zero A one IVC, are the reasons set forth in the recitals to this resolution. A, fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of materials, machinery and tools to be used in constructing, maintaining and repairing roads and culverts. Forty five thousand dollars, that's B, forty five thousand dollars for contracts for the maintenance or repair of roads. C, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for the construction and erection of a memorial building or monument. D, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for equipment for fire protection, mechanical resuscitation, underwater rescue and recovery and communication. E, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for street lighting systems. F, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for street, street lighting improvements. G, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for building modification for energy savings, subject to the exception set forth in RC three oh seven point eight six to three oh seven point nine two. And H, fifty thousand dollars for contracts for private sewage collection tiles. Number two, the self-certification made herein shall be effective as of January first, twenty twenty three and shall be applicable until December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Number three, in the event the township receives funding from a federal grantor agency and adopts a threshold more restrictive than these, those contained herein. The township shall comply with a more restrictive threshold when expending such funds. Or the township shall maintain documentation to be made available to a federal awarding agency, any pass-through entity and auditors in accordance with two CFR two hundred dot three three four. Yet further resolve that is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this township concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the township trustees and that all deliberations of the township trustees and any of its committees and resolve it in such formal action were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Could I have one? Did you first? You introduced it.
Yes.
Dr. Cross, second. And just kind of put some color around that. If we don't adopt this, we have to go out for three dollars every time we spend ten thousand or more out of the market funds. By doing this, we can go with one bid up to fifty thousand or forty five as it relates to roads. So any discussion of resolution twenty twenty two fifty? During now, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Potter.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty two fifty is adopted and that is everything that we put on the agenda for the special meeting.
I would like to thank Jeremy and, uh, Scott for last week in the storm over the holiday. They, they had a rough one. Uh, I talked to Scott there and on Puddin Bag Road there, he couldn't get through it and said that was the first time he couldn't get through it with the truck. The whole time he's been here.
And bring him back.
And bring him back home. So. Good job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
There's no other business. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at seven forty three. Happy New Year, everyone.